What a brother.
Mark Smith.
Doing good, Mayor. How about you?
I just put my...
Heard that. Uh...I don't see her either.
Paul Crafton.
Uh-huh.
Excuse me.
I really had a lot of fun, man.
Sorry.
Get my thing. I don't know. See, that's what I was doing. I couldn't get it to work. To the agenda packet. This was what Brad got it set up down there. We paused for technical difficulties. I couldn't do it. She couldn't do it. So I don't feel too bad now.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks. Okay, I'm ready.
Thank you. Okay, I think...sorry about the delay, but I don't feel too bad because Tira couldn't do it, and I couldn't do it, and Brad did.
Brad's supposed to, so...
I'd like to welcome everyone. If everyone will please stand. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another great day. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Now may the business that's conducted here tonight be pleasing in your sight. Guide and direct us and go with us through the further days and weeks to come. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In case some of you are not aware, our meetings now are, for want of a better word, are televised. And that's not a true statement, but you can get our meetings on the Internet. And I've had a lot of real good, positive comments about those. But several things, including myself, that I've been told about, we need to speak or to use the microphone or the mics. So remind all the board members and so forth that if you have something to say, try to speak into the mic, because one night, I think we...the picture, the video was outstanding, but the sound was not working. But all that's been taken care of, and there are cameras in here, even you all are on...you're getting your picture taken, too. Okay, item number five is approval of the agenda. Do we hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda?
Mayor, I would like to ask that we table the closed session items, which was the approval and discussion of some closed session minutes to February.
Okay. With that change, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty. Item number six is recognition, the senior citizens club. I don't see anyone here that's representing the club. Ms. Manning, I think, was coming, but haven't...didn't see her. I don't see her, so we'll skip that in case she comes later. Okay, the next item is introduction of new employees.
Don't think we have any, Mayor.
Don't believe we have one. Okay, item number eight is a presentation by David Hooks, the president of the Winterville Watermelon Festival Committee.
Hi. Glad y'all could have me tonight. The Watermelon Festival has decided that we're going to put on the first annual North Carolina Steak Cook-Off in April, be the 12th and the 13th. It'll be held out behind, in the area, out behind Chick-fil-A off Beacon Drive there. Pardon. We also...the few things that we have on there that we needed to discuss with the town. We've already talked to the landowner, got permission to use the property out there. We've already been doing a lot with the steak cook-off. Lost my piece of paper. We've come to ask for the five items that are on your...in your...in your agenda packet. There's a couple of things that we wanted to mention on there that we didn't talk about. The rides would be open from Thursday to Sunday. And also, we would like to have Beacon, from Vernon White to Highway 11, blocked during the time that we're trying to do the fireworks. They won't be done in the road, but they'll be done just off the road, and we...the fire marshal thought it would be a better idea to block that area off.
Mr. Hooks, that was not...for the mayor and council, that item particularly was not included in the agenda abstract. And I talked to Chief Moore after the fact, so the Beacon Drive closing is an extra request.
Yeah.
Added into this.
Added into this. And what the fest...what it's going to consist of is we're going to have a professional division, and we're going to have a fire department division. Fire department division won't cost any fire...volunteer fire department or paid fire department in the county. It's 22 fire departments. We've got 22 slots. We're offering those positions to fire departments in the county to start with. If any of the fire departments in the county decide that they don't want to participate in that, then we'll go outside the county to ask the fire departments to join us to do that steak cook-off. They won't... the fire department won't have to pay anything to do it, but they'll receive a first-place prize of $250. Second-place prize is, I think...I think it's 150. Third place is 75, and then it'll have a fourth and fifth place trophy. The professional division will pay us $100 to enter. And they will have an opportunity to win...the first place will win $2,500 first place, and also gets a invitation to Magnolia, Arkansas, where the national steak cook-off is held. And they'll get a free buy bid into that from our cook-off. We've been talking with those people there, trying to set this up and do that, and they offered that to us, so we were glad to do that. But we'll have rides. We'll have entertainment. We'll have fireworks on Friday night. Is there anything that I can answer for anybody that needs to know anything else about it or what we're trying to do?
I've been asked, and I told them I had no idea, as far as the steaks, does each participant buy their own steaks or...
What we'll be doing is, is we'll be selling tickets for $20. You'll receive a steak, baked potato, salad, bread, tea, or water with that $20 ticket. And the participants that are in the professional division will cook all the steaks for whoever buys steaks. The fire department doesn't have...won't be in that part of it. They'll just be judged, and they're supposed to be there to have a good time and help them to, you know, raise a little money. But during the day, you go around to the different cook areas, kind of pick who you want to get your steak from. That's where you go and get your steak. You start off at the line up at the front, which comes by us with the potato salad, bread, tea, tray, plate. Then you go to the steak cook-off participants and get a steak from them, and then they...but that's how it works. And we...they get...if you're professional, you get four steaks to cook. One extra steaks out of the ones that we don't give you to cook for the public. You get four of those steaks. They'll take those steaks, three of them, and cut them up, have...you combine, taste it, see if that's where you want to get your steak from or what have you. And then one of the steaks will be turned in for judgment. Any other questions? Anything I can answer for you?
Mayor, if I might, just one other little thing, just to dovetail in with what Mr. Hooks was saying. I'll take off my hat for a minute. He's the town attorney. I put on my Watermelon Festival hat. There was a recognition, I think, a couple of years ago, that the festival probably needs to have an additional fundraiser. As you probably know, we...up till now, we do all our fundraising in June and July and August before the festival, and it's just getting harder and harder to fundraise the money that we need to make the festival happen each year. So this is, I think, sort of the culmination of...recognition of a couple of years ago, that an additional fundraiser would be advantageous to us, to help us raise those monies we need to put on the festival in August. So it was...there's been tremendous work by others, not me, but others, to organize this and make it happen. And we feel that this will be the first annual, but we feel that within a couple of years, this could be a very large event. There's not one like this in North Carolina, and we think it'd be pretty neat. So looking to bring something else to Winterville, if you will, but this is...the purpose here is to help us raise money for the Watermelon Festival.
The closest one to us that does a steak cook-off is Georgia. That's the closest state that we have to us that does a steak cook-off. Have a lot of pork cook-offs in the area, but we thought that we would try to do this to bring in a different...seems like everybody has pig skin pick out or whatever they want to have, so try this. And so far as we know, the dates that we have set up for this will not interfere with anybody else putting on anything else. We didn't want to...we tried to look at all the dates, and this is one date that we felt that we could get everything accomplished again. But we would really appreciate your help in helping us with these things. And like I said, just add on the part about blocking off the street. Any more...any more information you need?
Well, item five, I haven't heard you mention. Item five on the...
The fireworks...you want me to go down the list?
That might be a good idea, Mayor.
Probably a good idea.
Just so everybody's on this...
I've already spoken to the police chief about the rides where we did that with them last year when we put on the rides out there, and that was okay. And I spoke to the police chief. He said he was fine with it, and I guess if y'all have any questions for him, y'all can ask him about it. The other thing was, you allowed us to use water out there last year, and we're asking that y'all do that again this year. We also are going to need a noise permit, because we are going to be having some bands and stuff out there. It won't be anything like what we do at the festival, but it'll be some local and regional bands playing. And that'll be from...till 10 o'clock at night. We're planning on shutting everything down at 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday night. We're trying to secure fireworks, and we have worked with the town fire marshal and the fire chief and to find out all that that's going on. And the final thing that we wanted y'all to do was consider donating $2,500 for fireworks. We've already raised $2,500 from another place that we...you know, they do half if we can get somebody else to do half. The other thing that's going to be involved, a little bit of cost, is the town fire marshal. He has to be there when they set up. He doesn't have to be there when he set...when they set them off, but he has to go back when they quit, when they finish setting them off, and then he has to go back the next day and search the area and make sure there was no unfired shields. So we were wondering if that could be paid for, too. But that's the money part of it that we were looking from the town for.
How is approval your plan of action along with closing?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Your plan to be approved with the $2,500, all the stipulations, along with closing down Beckett Drive during a fireworks play...display?
Was that a motion, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I second that motion. I second that motion, because the town of Winterville has already, for this year coming, invested $25,000 for the Watermelon Festival. And for what it does for our town, I think it's a good investment. The Watermelon Festival lost money last year, so I'm trying to cover our investment. And I think it's a pretty flimsy amount of money to help protect our contribution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing that I have is, I just wanted to comment on, you know, what we discussed last year when we brought up the Watermelon Festival, how much the town was going to give for last year, and then for this year also.
And just to clarify, last year is the current budget year we're in, which was $35,000. This current budget year was allocated to the Watermelon Festival in August.
That is correct.
So for the coming budget year, which would be fiscal year 2013 and 14, it was a two-year funding deal with the second year, an allocation of $25,000.
Just down $10,000.
Right. So that starts July 1st. I just wanted to...I say this last year and this year, too, particularly since we're getting ready to start the budget process, but I just wanted to clarify, last year is really this current budget year, and next year is...
So what you're saying is this $2,500 will fit in this year's budget, right?
Correct.
And it won't...it won't have anything to do with the next year budget?
That's correct. I would have to...I would find it in the current year's budget, just so everybody's on the same page.
I also see on that first...that the police department will receive 50% of the net on the amusement rides.
Yes, sir. They...last year, they don't actually patrol that park yet, because it's not in the city limits. And what they were doing, we partnered with them to put those rides in, and they would go out and check on us for us, and that's what we felt was fair to put extra work on.
Hope they make a lot of money.
So then, this year will make us spend, what, $37,000 towards...$37,500 towards the Watermelon Festival.
Be 25...be 27.5.
No, sir. It'll be 37.
37.5.
That's correct.
So I just want to make sure that we understand what we are doing. That what I want to make sure I understand what I'm doing.
Sure.
Because you did correct me on...because I was thinking this right before... Thank you. But I was thinking that it was for the next year.
Right. It's an actual...
Actually, if you really look at it, it is for next year, because for the Watermelon Festival for August.
Well, we're trying to...we're trying to offset the deduction that we're getting this coming year from the town board by putting on another project to try to raise money. We're losing $10,000 from the town, which is a considerable part of our budget, which we've had two years, one year of a hurricane, and last year where it rained. And we're not broke, but we're bent real bad.
I noticed that item four, your committee is trying to secure fireworks.
Right.
You have not gotten them yet?
I got $2,500 towards $5,000 worth. I'm asking the town for another $2,500, which will give me the $5,000. But if y'all don't give it to me, I'm going to raise it somewhere.
So you do have someone lined up to do the fireworks?
Absolutely. They'll be here to meet on February 2nd.
Well, you know, I'm not complaining about the Watermelon Festival. I think it's a great thing for the town. But, you know, once I believe this board make a decision, and I think that it has been approved, and we make a motion, I think we ought to stick behind what we say, you know? And that's the reason why I brought what I did up. So now, like I said, we are moving up from where it was at, to $37,500. Also, I want to know how much will the marshal, the fire marshal, what's the cost for that?
We need to be able to hear you on the recording.
It's going to be somewhere in the ballpark of about $300.
About three. So we're looking at less than $3,000, probably, that you asked him.
And we know we have a surplus at this time for the first half of the year of $168,000. We know that. We had $194,000, $94,000, $95,000 from the employees. We did not. And we took off $26,000 off of the raises.
If I could clarify that it's not necessarily a surplus, they're just...it's unspent funds based on the fact that there were some positions that were open for the first part of the year.
Thank you. You did a good job.
Just so that...
I helped a lot. You helped a lot.
It did.
That's excess revenue above expenses.
Correct, due to the fact that some positions were vacant.
Yep.
How much do you think that you will raise from this event? I'm trying to...that's something I'd like to know. I know you can't really tell me, because we've never had it before.
Right.
But, you know...
I can tell you what the event's costing. It's going to cost us $20,000.
$20,000.
But like, for the fire department part of it, what I'm doing is going out to different... there...just the fire department part of it, after your steaks and paying for awards and the whole thing, the fire department part, we're asking eight suppliers who do business in the fire department industry to donate $250. And we're on the way to getting that done. I don't have the whole eight of them done yet, but I've got four of them ready that have said that they would contribute.
And I know this right here sounds sort of like off-base a little bit, but the time that we lost into the Watermelon Festival is because of the weather wasn't friendly to us.
Exactly.
And there's no guarantee...
Well, I have no guarantee that the 12th and 13th is not going to be windy...
That's right.
Blowing rain or whatever.
I think you've got to go with this...to this with a positive attitude, just what the Watermelon Festival does for this town. And also, another added event, what it would do for our merchants in this town. To me, it's a no-brainer.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All of them?
One other. Could we put a limit on the amount, no more than 3,000 up to 3?
If the council chooses, yes, sir. That would encompass $2,500 for the fireworks, plus up to another $500 for personnel costs.
So it's $3,000 instead of $2,500?
Up to.
So I need to amend my motion?
Yes, sir.
I made a motion. I said 3,000 instead of 25.
Because you did ask for the town to pay for the...
For the fire marshal.
That's right.
I second that motion. That amendment.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Make sure I understand it, too, is with the cap on this expenditure would be $3,000.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, we...there was a lady that had asked to speak tonight, but according to Ms. Smith, she called and decided that she would wait until...or I believe her problem is being taken care of.
She decided she would wait until February to see how things are.
Okay.
I believe staff is working currently with her to address her concerns.
Okay, I'm just going to mention this under the...
Mayor Jackson.
I'm sorry.
While they're checking out that basketball goal in the street, could we kind of patrol, you know? It's happened quite a few times. I've even called, emailed our police chief about basketball goals in the streets near traffic, so could we kind of put a little emphasis on that?
Well, we already started doing that, ma'am. And we went over and we talked to Ms. Walker today, and there was a neighbor that was taking the basketball goal out on the weekends. She set it up for her kids. They played basketball, then they put it back in. And so like I said, what we've done is, we talked to the mother, and she's...she's certainly going to work with us on that issue, so it shouldn't be a problem. We did tell them that the kids didn't...they couldn't obstruct traffic and things of that nature. So I think that part of it's taken care of. We've also went ahead and we're getting our radar trailer to sit over there and watch traffic or watch traffic for us. We get kind of a count of when the speeding, if speeding indeed is occurring. Gives us a little better idea about traffic flow, too. To answer your question, I did check out a week or two ago. I actually went out myself and checked in. I didn't see any out there. Of course, you know, that periodically, people will pull them out, then they put them back, and they go back and forth. This is not a new occurrence. We've had this for a while. But we will certainly keep a sharper eye on it and make sure that the kids aren't playing in the street.
And it was a code enforcement issue there about an overgrown lot?
It did, ma'am. Take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh. Okay, under the public comment, I think all the board members have received a copy. We all got a copy, and we got an email from Mr. Henderson that he had some concerns about the Winterville Senior Citizens Club versus the senior...the Emmanuel Church. And he wanted us...wanted...he requested, rather, that that email be read at the meeting tonight. And after Ms. Parker and I discussed it, we decided we would not read it, but every one of you has got a copy of it. And later on, if you have questions, we will try to answer those. And later on, if you have questions, we will try to answer those. I believe the newspaper got a copy of that email also. But if, if you didn't, we got a copy for you, so.
Just to clarify, we thought Mr. Henderson would be here tonight to address the issue himself. I, I believe that he decided that he couldn't be here this evening. But nonetheless, council's been given copies of the email, and if we are to do anything further, you all will direct this accordingly.
Moving on to item number eleven is the consent agenda. Any items that need to be removed? If not, do a here a motion be approved, the consent agenda?
May I approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Under item thirteen, under old business is the economic development.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to keep you informed and up to date on where we are, and any members of the task force that are here this evening. On January seventh, I met with Brenda Daniels with Electric Cities and Mary Lilly, who's working with Greenfield Development regarding the next steps for the strategic planning process, and in how will we get that started with our newly appointed task force. The setup will currently be that Ms. Lilly will be spearheading the work with the task force, and we're gonna try to set up a meeting sometime towards the end, end of the month. In the meantime, what she's doing is compiling some demographic information that she will be discussing with, with the task force. Potential sites, current buildings that are available, things of that nature. Once a date is solidified, I will let everybody on the council know. So if you'd like to be there, you certainly can. And what they'll do is they'll kind of decide, get together, meet, discuss that demographic data, and then decide how to move forward with the strategic planning process.
I noticed in the paper that Greenville, Aiden, Kinston, mayors met to talk about economic development. Were we invited to that meeting?
If we were, I'm not aware of it.
I, I was not aware of it either.
I will note for the record that Greenville is also going through a strategic planning process simultaneously. And I know that Mary Lilly, who's working with us, will be working with the firms that they hire to make sure that if there's any information we can include that would be beneficial to our plans, she'll do so.
Under item fourteen is new business, is the, item number one is the budget calendar.
Mayor, members of the council, I know that Anthony, our finance director, and Jasmine have worked on a calendar, and you have an updated version at your seats. And I believe Jasmine also sent out the updated version on, by email earlier today. The format of the budget process is very similar to the one we used last year. And Anthony, I don't know if you'd like to come up just in case there's any discussion. I know that Councilman Moore pointed out that May twenty-seventh, I believe, may be a holiday. That may be Memorial Day. Not sure about that. But also, we have some discussion about the twenty-ninth of January, and there was, I got a couple of email responses that that might not be a good date to have our initial workshop. So I need to verify whether the twenty-ninth is good for everyone, which would be our, this month, end of this month, our first workshop. And then, we just need to clarify about the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh is Memorial Day.
So I believe we probably have that day off, I'm guessing.
It would be close, yes.
So with that said, I don't know what people's travel plans are, but if it's okay, we could move that from the twenty, twenty-eighth to the thirtieth?
Aye.
Keep it the same. The, uh, May twenty-eighth through May thirtieth would be our budget work sessions, where we really get down and, and work on it, if that works for everyone. And then, we kept January twenty-ninth, but I just need to verify that that's okay with the majority of the council. We really would need or prefer to have everybody there if we could. I believe Councilman Moye may have had a scheduling issue, and Councilman Moore may have had a scheduling issue.
Cleared my calendar, but Mr. Moye?
Yes. If we can set another date.
Other date, be better.
Yes, be better.
I believe Councilman Moye may have suggested the thirty-first.
Thirty-first? That's on the.
That's what you suggested, if everyone is okay with that date. Or we could carry over into the first full week of February. I was thinking sometime that week, if anybody has, would like to throw out a date.
Thirty-first would be fine with me.
I'm fine with the thirty-first if that's.
Does that work with everyone? I believe that's a Thursday.
With this.
All of these are at six, I believe. Is that right, folks? Does that work for y'all?
Historically, that's what we've done.
Good. I just want to make sure. So we have the thirty-first. The April fifteenth. May thirteenth. May twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. June third would be the public hearing, and June tenth would be the anticipated adoption of the new budget, with the new fiscal year beginning on July the first.
May dates are what?
You said May twenty-eighth through the thirtieth? I thought you said the twenty-ninth was Memorial Day.
Twenty-seventh is Memorial Day.
I'm sorry.
So we're saying May.
The, the dates in May would be the presentation of the recommended budget at our regularly scheduled council meeting on the thirteenth, and then our work sessions be the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. Okay. Does that work for everybody?
Is the, uh, June third gonna be on six o'clock also?
That is the, that's seven o'clock. Public hearings, we always hold at seven. But all the other times are, unless it's a regularly scheduled meeting, would be six.
Ms. Terry, let's go wrap it down to that list one more time, the whole list. Starting with January the twenty-eighth, make sure that.
Okay. And Anthony and Jasmine, catch me if I'm wrong, January thirty-first at six o'clock.
That's the first one.
That's the first one. The next one would be April fifteenth at six o'clock. May thirteenth, that's at a regularly scheduled council meeting, so that would be at seven. May twenty-eighth through thirtieth would be six for each one of those days. June the third is our public hearing, that would be at seven P.M. And then June the tenth is scheduled adoption, that would be at the regular monthly meeting, so that would be at seven.
Okay. Thank you.
And if those dates are agreeable, we would ask for approval.
I move for approval.
I second.
Have a motion in a second for approval. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item number two is discussion on removal of the solid waste containers on page nineteen through twenty-seven.
Mayor, members of the council, recently, the subject of whether or not the town should impose requirements for citizens to pull their trash cans or receptacles away from the curb after collection was brought up again. I included in your packet the excerpts from the June fourteenth and October eleventh of two thousand and ten, those, those meetings where the subject was discussed. Ultimately, the council decided not to proceed with any ordinance amendment, but what we did is, is put some information in the newsletter. And then I also think we tried to put out some door hangers if we saw people that left their cans out for an inordinate amount of time in the beginning. Of course, we still have folks that occasionally leave their cans out. We also included for your review an excerpt from the town of Beaufort's solid waste ordinance, and where we highlighted some verbiage that reflects the, the subject at hand. We wanted to get that back to you, as you said you'd like to see it, and we just await any further direction you have on the matter.
I understand that Kinston has an ordinance in place to, that the cans must be removed by, I don't know exactly the time limit, but I'm the one that brought this up. I have seen garbage disposal containers, I'm gonna call them, that are left on Cooper Street for one week after they are picked up. And it's just a bad looking, in my opinion, makes your neighborhood look bad if they would just, all you gotta do is roll them back out of sight. And I do know that Greenville is getting ready to go to a different type of collection altogether. And I've been told that they're gonna have in that ordinance that they think this must be put back.
Well, as I recall, I was here then, there was a lot of discussion amongst staff, and I believe Mr. Wisniew was still here at that time, about what the verbiage might say. I think everybody might have had a little hand in trying to come up with something. But if you see what's in Beaufort's solid waste ordinance, their verbiage is very simple, and it states that containers shall be returned to the rear yard by the resident on the day of collection. Again, that requires them to put their receptacle in the rear yard, and lots of folks keep theirs in the front of their garage doors or, or whatnot. So that would be an additional requirement that we don't currently have. But staff would recommend that any verbiage that you enact, certainly the simpler the better.
What's the feeling of the board members? I guess they must be all right like they are then.
Not really, but how, how, how does Beaufort enforce that ordinance?
I would anticipate, of course, I've been gone a while, that the code enforcement officer would probably handle giving warnings or addressing the issue. I don't know that they're actually citing anyone for anybody who doesn't, who, you know, fails to comply with that, so.
If, if a person is cited, I, I know what that means, but where does that go? What's the end result?
Theoretically, you could be fined for a misdemeanor violation of the town ordinance.
Would a district court judge in Pitt County honor that ordinance?
I'm going to look at our town attorney for that.
Well, it is, if, I'm not sure if the penalty's a civil penalty or a criminal penalty, but if, if, if we set it up as a criminal penalty, then that's where it would wind up in front of that district court judge. Whether or not one of them would convict, I'm certainly not gonna say. My feeling is they probably don't want to spend their time with it, to be honest with you. But you certainly have every right to prepare and to approve the ordinance and decide whether you want it to be a civil or a criminal penalty.
If we make an ordinance like that, and it should happen that a person winds up in district court, the case, if it's dismissed, we're telegraphing to the rest of the community it's not worth the papers written on. I, I wouldn't mind us having an ordinance if we put some teeth into it.
Is this one set up, as I honestly don't know, is it set up as a civil, as a civil penalty or criminal? Do we know?
I'm not sure. I would imagine civil.
I, I would think that it would be. And that, that would be, would be my recommendation, that we set it up as a civil penalty, which would allow whoever's enforcing it to give a couple warnings before they actually, you know, hit them in the pocketbook. And then we have the, the ability to enforce it or not here. So that removes it from somebody else in the judicial, in the judicial system, having to be our enforcement entity, and let us do it. I think that's the way to do it, to be honest with you.
I agree.
The only thing is, I was told recently by a police officer and magistrate, both verified it, they had over six hundred cases in Aiden on one court date.
I don't doubt that.
The magistrate told me, if it didn't issue any more citations, it would take years to the court, cases.
Correct.
Years.
That's an almost everyday occurrence at the Pitt County courthouse. There's five courtrooms down there, and most any day of the week, they're filled to the capacity and overflowing. But I would make the motion based on the town's attorney's advice, that we adopt the ordinance, and if you could give it the verbiage, Ms. Parker, from the town of Beaufort, if, if, if it's got the teeth to it.
Again, that verbiage states they have to put the cans or receptacles in the rear yard. I don't know if that causes anyone any heartache.
My idea was to get them off the street. Now, whether they, you know, in the rear or not, I don't know, but like I say, I know that those houses next door to me, they've got, I think it's either six or eight containers, and I've seen them left out there for a week. I've seen wind blow them into the street, cause of traffic problem and.
I, I think we're gonna have to go broader than that, because if you say get them off the street, okay, they come back, they move them two feet into the yard, and it's still out in the rear. Just some people wanna play games with you.
I know of a house on Ains Street whereby, they're always on the curb. They never leave the curb. They have a place set beside a mailbox, and they never leave the curb. And it annoys the person across the street. Mayor, if I, I, I feel for you and people that have neighbors like that.
Now, the residents that we're speaking of, are we talking about people that, that might have some problem about going back out and picking them up, you know, taking them out to beside the street, or?
Those folk, those houses next door to me don't have problems, because they probably got, I would say, a minimum of eight to ten employees per house that could go out there and get them.
Just want to make sure. Because I do know that, I think Aiden, they have certain ones that they actually go behind their homes and pick up their garbage and bring it out and put it on the truck and dumps it. Because of those residents, they're not able to do it for themselves, for the ones that are able, that's supposed to place their garbage beside the street. And that's what they do. Now, if, if there could be a possibility, if we have some problem with the ones that will not go back and pick theirs up, that we can just take it back there and charge them a little bit more? I mean, just, just do the walking for them.
Well, again, keep in mind, we don't pick up the garbage. Waste Industries picks up the garbage.
That's right. I think Aiden.
They pick up their own, if I'm not mistaken. I, I don't recall, but.
Have we addressed this with, I know the group homes are ones that keep it out there all the time. Have we addressed it with them? Have we written them a letter?
Yes.
Uh, I believe, I don't know that a letter was written, but I do believe we addressed it with them shortly after this was discussed last time, so it probably has not been addressed recently.
Maybe we should attempt to put that in writing and send it to management over there.
We can certainly do that. I do know that we have that problem some other places, but.
Yeah, that's not the only place that it occurs, but.
I hate to see us add another ordinance to our group of ordinances, especially something that has to be enforced by riding around looking, and if we're, you know, enforcing it for some and not for everybody, that's gonna be a problem. And I know around where I live at, there's gonna have to be some allowances, because we have houses that face two, they face one street, but the backyard is another street.
Right.
I would hate for us to have an ordinance on the book that we're not enforcing. And, you know, we need to do that. We don't need to add anything not, to not enforce. We're gonna do it, we need to find a way, decide on a method to make sure that we're enforcing it, and enforcing it for everybody.
And we have a number of residents that keep it on the side. I can think of two or three just on my street that, I mean, it's nice and neat, but it's on the side, and not in the rear.
It's not right on the street, though.
Well, we could certainly try to identify any that we might need to send a friendly letter to when our folks are, you know, on the other routes, and, and see how that works. That's, it's always gonna be something we have to stay on.
It is a driving hazard when the trash cans are rolling in the street. They fall over, the wind blows them over, might even blow them over when they, you know, fall. So I can understand it being a hazard. But I hate for us to add something and then not enforce it.
Now, what was your motion?
May I, may I withdraw my motion and ask that the town's attorney and the town manager come back in the February meeting with a drawn-up ordinance that this board can look at?
We have a sample ordinance already, it was in our notes, the one that we looked at before, that it would be put out no, no earlier than three o'clock the day before and taken in, no later than three o'clock the day after. We could simplify the language with that, and that would save us.
And theoretically, we could simplify that language and, and state that people have to put theirs on the side or the rear yard. and state that people have to put theirs on the side or the rear yard.
I think we need, we have to be real careful about setting a time,
That's true.
such as 3:00, because truck breaks down and it's later than that.
Right.
I think something reasonable would... But anyhow, I think Mr. Cooper has requested that. I don't see we need a motion.
No, sir.
Okay. Item number 15, are there any other agenda items?
Resolution? Resolution we have not passed yet?
He withdrew his motion.
No, the resolution.
For the senior citizens?
Right.
Oh, okay. We didn't read it.
Mrs. Manning was not here.
Well, they didn't, nobody, they didn't ever show up.
But we can still have the resolution, though.
Oh, yes, somewhere we sure do. Do we need, I don't know, do we need to read this resolution?
I think so.
I don't see any...
It's up to you, Mayor, whether you want to or not.
We read all the others. I think it'd be good.
Well, I can read it if that's what the board so desires. Resolution of the Town of Winnable Town, no, no, no. Resolution of the Town of Winnable Town Council recognizing the Senior Adult Fellowship, whereas the Senior Adult Fellowship meetings are held the second Monday of every month at the Emmanuel Freewill Baptist Church in Winnable, North Carolina, and whereas the first Senior Adult Fellowship meeting was held on July 13, 1987, in Winnable, North Carolina. Since the first meeting, the Senior Adult Fellowship has over 120 members. Whereas the objective of the Senior Adult Fellowship is to show an interest and love to adults 55 years old and older, and provide a spiritual, educational, fun fellowship to adults 55 years of age and older. Whereas the Senior Adult Fellowship was founded in the town of Winnable by Director Barbara Manning and Co-Director Jean Manning. Director Barbara Manning is a lifelong resident of Winnable, and whereas the Winnable Senior Adult Fellowship will celebrate 26 years of service on Monday, July 8, 2013, and now therefore it'd be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Winnable, that the Town of Winnable hereby recognizes Senior Adult Fellowship for their 25 years of service to adults 55 years and older in Winnable, North Carolina, adopted the 14th day of January, 2013, and signed by Doug Jackson, the mayor. By the way, they had their January meeting today. And I will say this, they have a group down there that really work. They call everybody, they got, I forgot how many volunteers that call, because I know they called my wife every month, let a notice come in, and they will tell you, you can either bring your sandwich or not bring a sandwich. Most of the time, they have a meal, so... With that being said, do I hear a motion that we adopt this resolution?
Same move.
Second. I have a motion and a second for adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's a very real nice organization. When I was working, I was even asked to present a program down there myself. And that's been a long time ago. Okay. I would like to mention that our county commissioner is with us tonight. He's here. Appreciate you coming. Whenever Commissioner Garrus is unable to attend our meetings, he will call me and let me know, so... I don't know of any other commissioners that do that, but appreciate that. Okay. Any of the staff members have anything that they would like to bring up at this time? If so, come forward and do your presentation.
How about they fit your agenda items?
Pardon?
16, we had 16 yet.
Which are they?
Future agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
16. I would like to bring up that we need to have a, two items to talk to representatives about in the legislature. One is to look at the water table and see if there's any way that they will, I understand the water table is in better shape than it was years ago, and it's getting better. They could have a study then on the water table in eastern North Carolina, and maybe we could buy water from Greenville. The second item talked to them about is having a sidewalk. My recommendation would be, we have a meeting, decide what sidewalk we need. Would it want to be Cooper Street or Mills Street? I first thought it was Mills Street.
I believe we do have a project into the state right now for a sidewalk, and I believe it's Cooper. I'm looking at Mr. Steck to see if he remembers. Is that right? We've not heard back from them, but certainly it's nothing to preclude us from asking about additional projects as well.
Right. They could put crosswalks at Pitt Community College. And here it is, our stoplight in downtown Winnable. There's no crosswalk to get to Dollar Store.
Got it.
A lot of people walk up and down Mills Street, and that definitely needs a sidewalk.
Okay.
But those, I was about to say, General Assembly to look at, especially the water. If we can reduce our water costs, that would help us out tremendously. And I think the water table since '99 has gotten better because of the flood. You know, we had, was it 24 inches at one time? And it takes years, but I understand it's gotten better, but let's look, at least look at it. Don't forget about, you know, we have to use less and less water all the time from the wells.
And we do have another reduction in August of this year.
Right, so they need to look at that, and if they adopt that early in the General Assembly, that might help us financially reduce the cost to our residents.
I had talked with Terry, I guess a couple of weeks ago, that we had discussed the possibility of inviting our representatives in, maybe in March or April or May, I know they're going to need a little time to be able to set a schedule and maybe have a meal provided. And between now and then, instead of presenting them with a number of items, which probably would not get looked at real well, maybe present two or three items that we would really like the General Assembly to potentially help us with. And again, we've got some time between now and then as a board. You know, we could pinpoint two or three things that we would really like to address with them. And I think that would be better than presenting eight or nine items and kind of overwhelm them, and obviously, a lot of those items are probably not going to get looked at, but...
Might want to look at it February, though, because they go back in the 30th.
Well, that's true. I don't know, you know, if we can contact them, how quickly we could get them on a schedule, but...
We'll see what we can do.
I'm sure they're very busy this time of the year.
At the Willis Building from 8:30 to 10:30 before the United Way. And also, there's going to be a meeting, I think, of the, not elector cities, but the cities, North Town municipalities this week. And special water table might be mentioned. Is anybody going to that meeting? Jasmine sent the notice out. Did anybody respond?
Next week. It's next week.
It's next week? It's next Wednesday, isn't it?
Yeah, we don't have a representative for Winterville yet.
It's Wednesday, correct?
Yeah.
I'll be there in town anyway Wednesday.
You'll go? Okay.
Be there anyway. The water, if we get our water costs down some, you know, we had to add additional chemicals to our water, and it does not taste good anymore. Taste has really changed.
It's a work in progress. But I don't, again, what I envision, any changes would probably, we would request any further reductions. I don't know that we'd be able to be successful on the one this year, but then there's additional one in 2018. So I think the request would probably be along the lines of any further reductions.
Any other items? Okay. None of the staff members had anything they wanted to discuss? Well, we will start with our counselor.
Mayor, I have no report. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Just one, the Noble Canal. Heard anything else on that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The Noble Canal.
Noble Canal?
Yeah.
I'd be more than happy to. Again, our applications are in. We received a request for additional information from the Army Corps. I believe we've turned that information around, so now we're just waiting.
So that was recently?
Yes, sir, before Christmas.
Okay. I'd like to announce, next Monday, the 21st, there are two events to encourage you to go to. One at 7:30 at Murphy Center, the community breakfast. Also at 5:00, the Greenville Convention Center. Just have an event for Martin Luther King, and encourage you, councilor, to go to that also. The one at 5:00, and at 7:30 in the morning, both are free. Also announced, February 10th, I talked to Ms. Powers, who's head of the Winnable Historical Society, and they're going to have a day for African-Americans, leaders in our community to be discussed. We've asked Jesse, will he head that up for us? Haven't given us answer yet. I know, I've asked her to mention Mr. Mitchell, and I think Ms. Robertson has a few people also. I assume around 3:00 on Sunday afternoon, February 10th. Ms. Mitchell's asked me a number of times, when her husband's portraits can go up in the depot. And each time I see her at the post office, I said, "Well, they hadn't finished this yet." But we're going to ask him once it's finished. He's served our community for 39 years as a minister, and died at the age of 69.
Okay, Ms. Robertson?
I'd like to know what progress we've had on Boyd Street.
I have not heard anything about the state project, but I will double check on that.
And Mr. Garrus, this morning, I know the board of commissioners, they said at 9:00 you were discussing DOT plans for our area. I would like to get a copy of those streets and stuff, if, you know, if it mentions any of the areas in Winnable. And also, code enforcement, we haven't heard a report about any movement on those properties that we were looking at.
That we've discussed in the meetings.
That we've been talking about those vacant houses and lots.
Well, just, I will ask Mr. Steck to give an update on that, if he has one. But I will say that we should be finalizing the position, new position, new person in that position this month.
Okay.
I don't know, Mike, if you have any update?
We discussed that the meetings previously have been addressed and cut, if they needed cutting. I know there were a few specific ones that we had talked about, and those have been taken care of. I know we're kind of in the low part of the growing season now, but we're keeping an eye out there for the ones that do still need some attention.
So town forces are being used to cut them?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, they have been.
For the next growing season, which is going to be a pun as the weather stays like it is now, staff has talked about having a contractor onboard that would be available either through some rotation of several contractors or contractor where we've been out and have onboard as jobs come up, so that town forces would not be called to do all of that work in addition to the other stuff they're trying to do. So I'll report back once we have further information on that.
And Chief Wilks, the situation, Ms. Henderson, he's been in touch with you?
Yes, ma'am, and I was informed this evening that we do have a possible suspect in that. It is a misdemeanor case, and Mr. Henderson will have to swear the warrants out himself, but we should have that rounded up, I'd say, the next day or so. Trying to go ahead and bring that to some kind of conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Mayor?
I just got two things. One thing that is, the sidewalks on Kentucky Street, it's covered on pretty good, looks really great. My question is, the home, I noticed that it's going to be a couple of homes that is, I mean, it's right there on the street. Are we planning on placing sidewalks in front of those residents? I think it's, I know of two residents on that street that the, I mean, the property, the home itself is right there on the street.
I think what you're going to see, and I don't know if King has more information, but you're going to see a combination of sidewalk and then markings on the street.
Okay.
So it's not going to be one, it's going to look a little different, but because we couldn't either secure the easements or because we didn't have enough room, there's going to be sidewalk and then pavement marking like you see on Jones Street, and then sidewalk. A combination of those two things.
The one thing I'll add to that is, is I think because of the location of the homes, you'll sort of see the sidewalk is on one side of the street and then shifts over. Mainly because of that reason, it was, it was going to be difficult to get a sidewalk in and make it look okay with the homes, is where they sit on the lot. So I think that's what, and I think Mr. Harwell is working on that. But that was my understanding, is the striping will be added there where they couldn't put the sidewalks.
Okay. And also, on Chana, what's that, Where's Your Wood?
Cats.
I get a call, I think I'm the only one, must be getting calls on this one street. But they said them cats are back and...
We just, I just had a...
I just went by there tonight before I came here, and yes, they are back. I almost ran over two out in the street. They say that it's all over their vehicles, scratching up their cars, you know, and residents having it fit around there.
I have not had any calls from any of the residents. However, we do know that that is an area, and as a matter of fact, the Intron Public Works Director and I had a conversation, I want to say it was Friday of last week, regarding the fact that we're starting to see cats show up around there. I know he has talked to the person in that area, and they'll try to keep an eye on it.
Well, you know, it's the same one that you have mentioned for the last six or eight months.
I believe they have developed a relationship. I mean, she expects that we're going to talk to her about it, and it's an ongoing saga.
Can we do anything about it?
Well...
Can we get rid of them, at least off the street and away from the other resident?
We can do our best, but, I mean, they have to see them, number one, and we have to be in the area if somebody doesn't call. If residents are upset about that, I encourage them to call. I've not heard anything about the cats recently, but we do know that's a problem area. Staff is aware of that.
Yes, it is a problem. I witnessed that tonight myself.
And it's not the only one, but that is one that seems to be recurring, and staff is aware of it.
Okay, so we're going to follow up on it?
Oh, yes, they're already on it, but I don't promise, again, unfortunately, cats are an interesting scenario. It's not quite the same as dogs sometimes in terms of catching them and whatnot, but we'll do our best.
And we've got cat lovers that will buy a bag of cat food, put it out, and cut a hole in it so the cats can just come at their leisure and eat.
We also have some situations in town where we set traps, cats are in the, get trapped in the traps, and before we can get around there and get the traps, someone has let the cats out. So, yes, we've...
We're going to have to get some better traps or something.
There's nothing wrong with the traps, it's the person that's letting them out of the trap.
It catches them.
Somebody's letting them out of the traps.
Well, but, you know, I understand by the resident, they are really complaining about, you know, the car's been scratched all up and everything.
I understand.
So I sure hope that we can resolve this problem soon.
Well, I...
I would love to resolve soon.
I would encourage any residents or who are having an issue to call and complain. I have not heard any. I'm not sure whether Chief Wilks has heard any or not, but I would encourage that, because it's difficult to know exactly what the issues are if they don't let us know.
Okay, well, they called me to report it to you.
I understand, but...
That's what I'm doing now, reporting it again, because it has been reported.
From the residents themselves?
From the resident to me.
I understand.
To the board and to you, yes.
But I also encourage them to call directly. Just at that point, sometimes it's easier to respond right then if there's an issue ongoing at that time. Does that make sense?
All right.
It's like a lot of the animal control calls we get. We need to see what's going on at the time. We need to see what's going on at the time it's going on, if that helps.
I got one that just loves the top of my truck. He loved to sit on it, just...
Unfortunately, this discussion does not resolve it in and of itself by virtue of the kind of animal we're talking about.
Well, I mean, you explained it to me that they need to contact you, and I will pass the word along, I will.
Or the police.
Or the police. And it'll get done.
Well, I'm not sure we're on the same page, but again, if they don't see it, and if the people aren't going to complain right then, or lodge a complaint themselves, sometimes it's more difficult to handle right then.
I have no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Before we call on Ms. Parker for her comments, Mr. Moore mentioned something about the Martin Luther King celebration. I know that the Greenville Mayor and I have been invited to Pitt Community College, they're having a breakfast. I didn't bring my stuff with me, I forgot what day it is, but anyhow...
It's Friday.
We're going to be out there that morning at quarter to 8:00, I think is what the time they said, and...
It's 8:00 to 9:30 at Goads Student Center, and then their, their program afterwards. It costs us $10. Sidney Lott's gonna be the speaker from 8:00 to 9:30, then swing the speaker afterwards.
But I do know that the Greenville Mayor and I are gonna be there. Supposed to be quite a celebration, it's gonna last right on up to around 12:00, I think. Now, Ms. Parker?
I don't have any comments or report, except to say Happy New Year to everyone, and I'll look forward to working with all of you in the new year.
She's walking better, too.
I'm feeling much better, thank you.
They all will.
I knew about the walking.
You did. We were quite a pair there for a while, you and I.
Okay. Not hearing anything else. I hear a motion, we adjourn.
I saw a movement.
Second.
Favor share?
Aye.
Good job, everybody.
Lord have mercy.
Gotta keep my cover up for that camera.
Yes, sir. Okay.
C-H.